Excellent. Well, let's get going. Welcome to the Tuesday, August 12, 2025 Working Session of the Ann Arbor Planning Commission. For detailed information on meeting procedures, including the agenda, please see the agenda that was provided in Legisar today. We come to the second item of our meeting, which is Public Comment. This is an opportunity for individuals to speak up to three minutes on issues. Yeah, I guess you can speak up to three minutes on anything because it's a work session. And because this meeting is only available via Zoom, you will have to use the Zoom Raise Hand feature or Star 9 on the phone. And city staff will identify callers and permit you to speak and address the commission. You'll, if you could move to a quiet area and mute any background noise, that would be great. And for any participants addressing the commission, please state your name and address at the beginning of your comments. Planner Kelly, is there anyone who would like to address the Planning Commission at this time?
I do not see any members of the public on the call this evening.
I concur. So I will close the public comment and move directly to Agenda Item 3, and in particular, 3A, our CIP discussion. And we are joined by Kayla Coleman, who will lead us through this discussion. And I will turn things over to you unless Manager Kelly has something to add. All right.
All right. Wonderful. Thank you, Claire White, and thank you, Commission, for having me this evening. I'm pleased to be here to share updates on the capital improvement planning process. I've got just a few slides that I'm going to cover, and then we'll have plenty of time for discussion. You did receive materials in advance as well, so I hope that memo, you were able to access that memo and have reviewed some of the follow-up from our prior discussions and some highlights of what's in the CIP that will be next presented. So with that, here are a few slides. So yes, I'm Kayla Coleman, Capital Projects Asset Manager, presenting the updated capital improvements plan for you this evening. So we're going to cover, got a brief agenda. I'm going to go over some updates on the timeline and status of developing the CIP, some highlights specifically for the FY '26 to '31 CIP update. And then, again, plenty of time for questions. So looking at the timeline, you are all familiar with this. I'm not going to go into a lot of detail. You've seen this many times. This is the typical timeline where in a standard CIP year, we conduct the CIP process in the fall. I bring it to you December, January, and then that moves into the budget cycle from there. Just a reminder. And then this is what things look like this year. I believe you've seen this slide as well. I may have shared this when I was with you in April. So this year, we are doing things a little differently. We are trialing, we had an opportunity to trial an earlier CIP process. So the CIP has been developed over these summer months, and I'm bringing it to you today at this work session for discussion. And I plan to be back targeting the September 3 Planning Commission meeting for your action on the CIP. So no action tonight, as you are aware, but action in September. And then that will be ready and on deck for when finance gets started with budgeting in January or February. They'll have the approved CIP hopefully available and at their fingertips, ready to go. So that's a quick overview of that. Then some highlights of what's in this year's CIP. So this year, we're up, doing an update. Let me back up one slide. This is an update to the FY '26 through '31 CIP. So last January, January of '25, the Planning Commission approved the FY '26 to '31 CIP. And the way that we have conducted our CIP cycle is that every other year, we do a full plan update where we look at all six years. And then in those alternating years, we do just an update modification year, looking at the two upcoming years in the six-year plan. So FY '26 and '27 are those two years for this time. '26 is the year we are in right now. The fiscal year for the city starts July 1st, so we're actually already in that fiscal year. And then FY '27 is the other year that we're looking at right now. And that's the year that would move to council for budget approval in spring of '26. So that's a little reminder on kind of how we do this in the modification years. So with that, because it's a modification year, we're not doing an overhaul to the CIP. We're looking for things like budget updates, primarily schedule changes if we know a project has fallen behind or something has been accelerated. So you see that there's 14 new projects added as I was modifying this from the slide I used with you in January, probably it was. There were something like 80 or 90 new projects added. So in a full plan year, we do a whole lot more looking at what the needs are for those ensuing six years. In the modification year, we stay pretty focused on the existing projects, but a few things get, do get added here and there where it makes sense. 74 projects that are completed already or expected to be complete by the end of FY '26. So because it's a forward-looking plan, and FY '26 is the fiscal year we are in right now, any work that is going to be done by the end of this year actually drops out of the plan. So 74 projects that have dropped out, nine projects that were eliminated or placed on hold, and you received an attachment that provided an explanation and overview if there were any that, any of, for those nine, I suppose. This leaves a total of 453 projects and $1.16 billion of expected project costs over the six-year period. Those are your highlight kind of six on the CIP. Then I've got just a few bullet points here. I provided a more detailed narrative in the memo, but some of the thing, I like to just highlight what's new or different in the CIP you're looking at in each cycle. This year, again, this different schedule that we're on, the summer CIP process that we've done was driven largely due to staff availability in my upcoming leave. However, it also was something we've talked about previously, having an interest in seeing, could we get started earlier on the CIP? What would that look like? There are a lot of reasons why we typically run this process in the fall. Some of that is construction season and staff availability. But the other thing that became more apparent as we went through this year's cycle is that the close of the fiscal year being June 30th does make it quite challenging to develop a CIP during those same months. And part of that is that even though the fiscal year ends June 30th, finance doesn't have, they don't close the books on the fiscal year, so to say, immediately. It takes time to get all of those final invoices tabulated and final project budgets. So for them to be able to answer my questions of what can we afford? And have we programmed a sufficient number of projects or are we over budget? It takes a little more time for them to get all of those numbers pulled together. And fall really is, I think we're finding probably a more, a time when they are able to give a more confident answer in terms of what should be programmed in the upcoming fiscal years. So we've done the best we could with the information we have available right now. But something to recognize is just that there, this, of course, is a plan. This leads into the budget process, but as we get closer to budgeting, finance may find that there's some asset groups, water, I'll say, is one in particular. Water always has very tight funding availability. There's a lot of demands on that system and a lot of need for the dollars. So that's one where we expect there could be some projects that need to get scaled back or delayed. And we've done some work to think through in advance if we, if we find that to be the case, which ones might be suitable for a scope revision or a delay. The other key point to think about is the uncertainty around federal funding. So this is the state of reality that we are in and have been in over the last few months is there's a lot of shifting in the landscape around federal funding availability. We are moving ahead, programming projects based on, again, best information we have available at the time. That's all that we can, can really do. And grants that have been awarded that we expect to come to fruition, we are still counting on those dollars. If something changes and those grants become no longer available to us, then that will have the potential to impact project timelines and scopes. So just something to anticipate. The other is utility infrastructure comprehensive plans is an important topic, just to highlight. I know this has come up related to the land use comprehensive plan update. And just to be aware, as a reminder, the sanitary and water comprehensive plans are ongoing. And so recommendations that will come out of those plans will feed into the next CIP cycle. So expecting that we would have the results of the water comprehensive plan by December of 2025, and the sanitary recommendations are expected in the winter or spring of '26. So all of that is still in progress, but moving along. So these are some charts and graphs that I update each year, and I post these on the public-facing webpage just to give some quick highlight of what we're looking at. So I mentioned it's a total of $1.16 billion over the six-year planning period. The largest fund overall, the asset group with the greatest number of dollars is city-owned buildings. But this is very significantly driven by the Ann Arbor Housing Commission projects, which are making up $320 million of those $378 million. And then following behind, city-owned buildings, you see water, which I just mentioned. It's a fund with a lot of money in it, but there are a lot of, a lot of needs throughout that system, a lot of aging infrastructure that does need attention. So that one is that $291 million. And following that, I guess, let's see, streets and bridges, $123 million. So those are our top three in terms of where the, how the funding is spread. This just allows you to look at that data in another way. I will make sure that this presentation does get added to your, to the Letterstar files, so you have it for reference. But these charts are also available, again, on A2Gov.org/CIP. So this shows tabulation of how many projects are spread across different asset groups, as well as how the funding is split. With the greatest number of projects being in water, followed by streets and bridges and stormwater closely after. So it is interesting, city-owned buildings only has 23 projects in the asset group, even though it had the greatest number of dollars. Those are very expensive projects. And again, looking at the data in a different way, here's your number of projects, just in a, in a bar graph for you. So for Commission discussion, I wanted to, we did ask if you had any questions, if you could provide those in advance. That would help staff be prepared for tonight's discussion. And I know this is a lot of text on the slide. Again, you'll have it for reference later, but I, I wanted to acknowledge the questions that we did get in advance. There's two, there's the slide and one more after it. Both of the questions were related to the Sunset Sidewalk project. And so what we were asked was about how the timeline is moving along. So in the memo that I provided in February, it had stated that the Sunset Sidewalk study would help inform the 2025 CIP. The memo I provided to you this August said that that study will inform the 2026 CIP. So very fairly, we received the question, what happened? Why, why is, how has the timing changed? What's going on? And because the, the shift in how we are conducting the CIP this year has shifted to the summer instead of the fall, the data from that study is not ready yet in order to inform the CIP that you'll be presented with, that you were presented with for tonight's discussion and for action in September. It's just not, it is still moving along. We just conducted the CIP earlier. The, oops, I missed one. The second question on Sunset had to do with the opportunity to consider both the, a more comprehensive transportation project for that corridor as compared to a, so the more ambitious transportation project as compared to this more simple sidewalk-only project that had been previously pursued for that corridor. And that will be included as part of the analysis that that consultant team is looking at. They will do an updated cost estimate for that previously envisioned sidewalk gap. However, the scheduling and the timeline will not be part of that study because that is something that happens specifically in the CIP process, when we can score and prioritize all the projects and look at everything that's competing for a shared funding source. So, and also just to know that staff is acknowledging, we'll be looking at both that more comprehensive transportation project as well as the sidewalk only, but we do see value in looking at what alternatives are available in order to balance the community values, both of preserving natural features and providing the sidewalk infrastructure. So you've seen a slide like this before. This is just a reminder, your role as Planning Commission, you review the CIP projects, and you are the decision-maker for whether or not the CIP gets approved. So part of your task in, in making that decision is to consider whether or not project scopes align with existing plans and policies, and does the CIP overall align with comprehensive planning efforts, which I recognize is underway, and you, you're working from a draft comprehensive plan update. But keeping that in mind as you review the CIP is, is important. And, and then I added this bubble since I'm coming to you today at this work session, and your, your meeting for action is still a few weeks away. Is there any other information that you would need from me in order to be able to move ahead with CIP approval? If there's anything that I can answer for you tonight, great. Or if there's anything you need me to bring back for you in the future meeting, I would appreciate hearing about that tonight. So that is all that I've got for you, and I am happy to take questions now. I'm happy to also pull up any slides again if there's something specific that you want to return to and look at more closely. Otherwise, I turn it over to you, Commissioner.
Well, thank you so much for your presentation, and we will start our discussion with Commissioner Adams. I may interchange between Commissioner and your first name, so just bear with me as I adjust throughout the evening. If you're offended, do let me know, and I'll take your particular honorific. Commissioner Adams.
Thanks, and thanks, Kayla, for both responding with a lot of detail to my questions. I think the Sunset Sidewalk project is going to continue to be my personal, you know, fixation in this process. You know, I don't know if this is a question, it's, I think you can treat it as one. It's, I'm going to style it as a comment, and maybe as a piece of feedback. I think now that the, the order of things has shifted a little bit, I guess my preference would be to put the Sunset Sidewalk project back in as a sidewalk-only project into the CIP. And then when the study is done, we can make the adjustment. And the only reason I'd say that is in the prior sequence of things, it made sense. Let's get the study, we'll have it in place for the fall. If there's a decision to put the sidewalk project back into the plan in accordance with whatever rank it has, then we could make that in, on some reasonable timeline. My concern here is now that, and for reasons I understand, the order and timing of things has changed, which is fine. I, I guess I'd rather just have the Sunset Sidewalk project in there because I have to imagine it's '27, or it's not, it's not like we're building, it's not like we're planning for it to be built next year. There's no scenario where that feels feasible or the way things normally work. I'd rather get that, we get the study back, we can move things around. But absent that, I mean, my assumption is that that study is going to come back, and it's going to present a cost and/or a timeline that's going to be more or less kind of where the project was slated before. You know, when we looked at this back in February, it's going to be minimum five, six, seven, potentially longer than that years in the future. And I think, you know, I understand the point about balancing natural features and wanting to do that. But the sidewalk-only project did do that. We had three different options on the table for it. And I guess, going back to like community values, I think staff did a really thoughtful job in setting up the prioritization scheme in order to triage and order how this stuff would be done. And I think one of my concerns is that when I, when I read some of the materials that I'm seeing for the Brockman project, which has become similarly, you know, politicized and opposed by some local residents, they're referencing the Sunset Sidewalk project as an example for how you can oppose staff and council in the execution of these, of these projects. So I'm, I'm, it's, there's a concern that I have, I think, in the first instance, about the disruption of us, I think, of a properly laid staff prioritization scheme that we should be following. But I'm also concerned about the precedent that it set and the signal that it sent to the community that, hey, if we, if we run that play, we can, we can block this sidewalk. So I, I have multiple objectives in trying to get this back on the agenda. And if I'm, if I'm, if I have sort of any input at all, I'd rather not delay getting it on the list. I'd rather put it on the list as sidewalk only, and then adjust if the study comes back favorably, and the consensus is that that's the project that should be pursued. But that's just my two cents and some feedback.
That's helpful feedback, and I, I was just digging for my February memo to you, to the Commission, because I think we even, we did bring it back, and we took it off hold in order to score it. Because I think that was the request from February, was to see where would this rank today relative to the other sidewalk projects. So short of being able to pull that up on the spot, I do recall going through that exercise, and I think that it's something I can follow up with staff to take a look at what year. Yeah, actually, I've got it here. So we, let's see if you can see this memo, this page from the February memo. This showed if we were to bring Sunset sidewalks as it was before back in, where did it fall in the ranked order listing? And I'm happy to have a follow-up discussion with the rest of staff that are involved in programming the active transportation group, see what year would make sense. Or, you know, where, where, there is a limited amount of funding. As you know, this is, most of the projects in this asset group, especially any sidewalk gap projects here, are funded through the sidewalk gap millage, and there's a finite number of dollars. So if this were to come back in somewhere in the mix, I mean, it ranks middle of the pack, just about in terms of overall priority, we would need to see what else gets shifted out. So maybe there's a project that is programmed, happened sooner, that ranked lower. And in that case, that could be deferred, but I, it's hard to answer that on the spot of which year it would. And I didn't perceive that you were asking for like a deliberate answer to what year it would end up in. But just so you know, I think it would be a little bit of conversation with staff and looking at schedules and budget availability.
Totally understand.
Anyone else? Okay, Kayla, on your three bubble slide, you had three things you wanted us to look at, and I just wanted to return to that before we wrap up this section, assuming that no one else has any comments or feedback, so that you get what you need. And did I hear you correctly that you're going to present back to us in September? You're muted at the moment.
Hi, just trying to share and talk to you at the same time.
Sure.
So yes, I am expecting to be there early September, September 3. So I am, my, my leave would begin at the end of September if all goes according to plan. If something changes with that, and there could be unforeseen changes. And someone else, possibly Sky Stewart, or someone else from Systems Planning would likely present to you instead.
Okay.
So you should be seeing that slide now.
We do.
Okay. So yeah, just, these are sort of prompts just to help guide you. I don't need explicit answers to these. It's just as you're thinking about the action that you would take when this is brought to you in September, how do you decide whether you should approve or not approve a CIP? And some guidance for that is thinking about existing plans and policies, thinking about comprehensive planning efforts. That, that should help guide you in your decision. And then again, if there's something else you feel that you need from me, please let me know.
Great. Another opportunity for commissioners, looking at this slide to see if you have any comments for Kayla before we thank her. Oh, thank you, Julie. Commissioner.
So I'm just, the memo, the July 31 memo, there were just some other things on there, like sidewalk gap scoring changes and Fuller Maiden Lane, East Medical Center. Are those just going to be revisited? Like, are there things that we should know other than what's in the memo, or?
Yeah, I, I don't have anything further for you on those. I included those because these were questions, topics that came up either at the January 2025 meeting or the April work session, or both. Some of them came up at both. And so I wanted to share updates that I had available for you, but I had nothing to add really other than what is in the memo. I'm happy to, I can do a little review here if that, if you would like me to reiterate what was provided there. I just don't have anything further.
Okay, I, that, I think that's fine unless other people want more information. I just didn't know if those were ones that were sort of called out in any further way.
No, yeah, I would expect, like the sidewalk gap scoring, for example, that's probably worth mentioning because the update there, there were questions, I think it was in April, questions about how does the scoring that happens specifically for sidewalk gaps compare to the prioritization in the CIP and the active transportation group? And how are those playing into each other or related? And something that, and in conversations with staff about how to talk about the, or how, how we could talk about this or what information might be available to share, we determined that those sidewalk prioritization criteria really are due for an update. And staff, I won't be included next, I will not be here, but there will be a group of staff that will look at updating the sidewalk gap prioritization criteria this fall. And then that would be ready for the 2026 CIP. So I think that's a topic that I would continue to share updates because I know it's, because I know it's something that this Commission is interested in as those criteria are updated. But otherwise, the, the changes to project programming, for example, I don't think I have anything further on that. It was, again, just the question, there were some questions up, and I think it came up related to Sunset, actually. You know, if that project moved forward in 2020 or 2021, whenever it was, then was it ranked higher at that time? Because now it's only showing up middle of the pack, like I just showed you, and that happens. And this is sort of an explanation of some of the different reasons why rank order can shift. We did update all of the scoring criteria for the active transportation asset group, which would play into that. There are new projects that get added, so anything that has a newer project ID than the Sunset Sidewalk project that's ranking higher than it, it could be that that just, it didn't exist in the CIP at the time that Sunset was ranking higher. And then also, external funding sources can accelerate timeline. And I think that when that was pursued previously, it was going to take advantage of a federal funding that was available. So that's just something to be aware of in terms of how things shift and why they end up where they end up. Fuller Maiden Lane, East Medical Center Drive, again, this was certainly a topic of interest in January and in April. And so I wanted to make sure to remind everyone that there is that transportation survey that's available because I thought that that was very similar to what I heard. I think it was Commissioner Norton specifically was talking about, regardless of what we see in the crash data at that intersection, there is value in thinking about how people feel when they're biking through different corridors, different intersections. And that's really, it was very shortly after that conversation with Planning Commission that I heard that the transportation staff was putting out this survey, which is really trying to get at just that, trying to better understand which areas people feel comfortable or not. So I think that would be a great place to channel some of the feedback that you have previously shared for that transportation team to look at. Um, for that transportation team to look at. So so yeah, sorry, sorry, I didn't touch on those previously, Commissioner Weatherby, but I hope that that helps. To just give a little context.
Thank you, Commissioner Mills.
I was gonna say the silence was not lack of interest, it's that thank you for pulling together all of the things. Um, that we might and you might anticipate. I really, really, really appreciate the list of what's come off. Also, we should celebrate all the things that have come off because they're C completed, like we don't do that often enough. Um, and also the, you know, the list of things that have been added on. I would just say um I know that it makes sense that first of all, thanks for including the information. About the current comprehensive future land use map draft and the information about when the water. Um, and stormwater systems will be coming into that and just flag that I feel like. Next year could be really big. Um, especially because if um because we only add things. Really every two years, so I'm sorry that you're gonna come back to big. I hope that. That things like like groundwork has been laid because I think that I anticipate that will be a big question. Um, is how do we make sure that projects start to get programmed in so that it's um matching with the. Hopefully by then newly adopted um comp plan for the city. So, but thank you for all this work. I think this is, I I really appreciate you. Remembering what we talked about last time. Um, and bringing that forward to us and anticipating some of our questions.
Thank you.
Anyone else? So Kayla, I just have a a very small um maybe uh towards the end of what would be helpful. Um, so in the uh short uh charts that she showed us or the presentation that she showed us, it showed the three hundred and twenty five million for the Housing Commission. Uh, or for city owned buildings and then particular three hundred and twenty million for the Housing Commission. I imagine that about a hundred and seventy million of that is related to three fifty. Um, Fifth Avenue, uh but I think it may be. A little disorienting for people since the city is partnering with the external developer. And trying to understand, does that mean that the city is um committing bonds or are is. Is there a contribution from the city for the construction and the development of that project? Um, just for clarity, because it it's a really big number and it it can um. Sort of be difficult for people to track uh what's happening because the only. Uh, sources that they're probably looking at are the external articles and not the Engage website, which sort of breaks things down. So if there are any spaces um where it could be a footnote or um a reference out to the Engage. Page that does break down that information without you creating a narrative for it. I think that that might be uh helpful for any folks who are engaging with the CIP from the public.
That's great feedback and yeah, that in the A two Engage. Um, dashboard or site or whatever we're calling it, I think it has come online. For the first time since I i- in a CIP process, I don't think it was available last CIP cycle. So. I'll take a look at the CIP webpage as well as our um our map dashboard that we have and work in some references. To specifically direct people to that site as a resource for additional information. I think that that makes a lot of sense. Um, if there's an interest in having a note specifically for. The three fifty South Fifth, I I could take a look at that project scope so there. You know, when you search for an individual project, if if someone makes it to our. Dashboard map and searches for that project, they could pull up that project data sheet that has the scope written up. And that would be another place that I could make note of um. Where where more information is available to dig in, but I realize that's kind of like assuming a lot that someone actually finds.
Yeah, and I I don't want to create work for you. I don't think um that's the uh direction of my comment. I think it's because. There is a, you're very conversant and you understand the CIP. And we, as the Planning Commission, are learning from you about the CIP and overs- you know overseeing it as we go and so. Our questions are coming forward and you are great to a- answer our questions, but the public doesn't always get the benefit. Of being able to ask you in this way unless they do it before the meeting. At at the start of the meeting or at the end of the meeting. And so when you see a really big number like three hundred and fif- you know. Uh, what is it? Three fifty, three hundred and fifty million and three hundred and twenty million is for the Housing Commission. People in their mind are thinking, oh, didn't the city sell that? Isn't there going to be an external developer? Why does the city have a hundred and seventy million dollar. Um, line item for the CIP for this? And it's just just helping people. Understand how that process works. And so if that can be done by linking to other information. I think that's a just a quick answer and and that can also feed into the water projects since they also have their own capital. Improvement plan to say, hey, two hundred and fifty million is coming for water infrastructure improvements. And here's how you can see the detail of where that's coming from and how we plan uh to do that. So. Those are just small things as people are engaging with the CIP through the Planning Commission. I just thought it might be helpful to help. Uh, with big numbers like that.
Sure. No, thank you. And I I take that to heart as someone who worked. For a dozen or more years in public engagement and trying to make information more accessible to. The population at large. Uh, I certainly want to do what I can with the CIP to make that more um accessible. And to clarify and and one point I think that relates to. Your note on this Housing Commission project is when I share those numbers of total funding anticipated over a six year period. I may, I may take another look and see what other language I can add to better explain that because those are. Numbers, it's totaling the project budget. It's not even necessarily just city funding. It does include external sources as well. So having a footnote to say that, I think, could go a long way and. Um, clarifying like this doesn't mean three hundred and twenty um dollars from the Affordable Housing Millage or something like that.
Exactly, because it would bankrupt the, it would bankrupt the fund. It doesn't have three hundred and twenty million in it. So, okay.
And sometimes it's even making assumptions about grants that we're hoping to achieve. It's just not grants that we have acquired. So, okay. Point taken. Thank you, Donna.
Yeah, absolutely. Anyone else before we let Kayla go? Seeing no one, thank you so much, Kayla, and we look forward to seeing you again in September before your leave. And uh, yeah, thank you so much for all of the um incorporation of the feedback that we've given you and this quick update.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Yeah. All right, so I noted that three additional items was. Uh, added to our agenda, but it was added under the CIP presentation. Um, and so I believe. Uh, Senior Planner Michelle Bennett is here to tell us all about that. Uh, and again, Michelle, you can remind us that you prefer Michelle in these settings. Or we can refer to you as we want with these.
Either, yeah, sure.
And so.
Whatever comes to mind first.
Yeah, update us on, I think it was three or four attachments that were added uh to the agenda, including an updated map. And then uh give us some feedback about um how you would like us to engage with that.
Okay. Yes, so thank you for noting that there are a few additional um documents attached to the agenda that should not be under CIP. They should be under comp plan, so we will um fix that. Um, I also wanted to let you know tonight, I'm just here to introduce these topics. We will not be getting into. Lengthy discussions. We wanted to prepare you for the August nineteenth meeting. Uh, so that you have about a week to to review these materials. The first one, though, is the engagement summary. Again, still in draft form. This uh I believe has been a request from the Planning Commission and also um from residents during public comment. So if you open that up, it's about, I think it's seventy pages. Um, it outlines every single event that we held, including um steering committee meetings. Including the subcommittee meetings, including Planning Commission meetings, but then also all of our larger events when we went out into the public, when we met with. When we met with certain stakeholders, when we held focus groups, when we did interviews, um when we had the events at the library. So each one of those should be formatted the same, just a table up top to give you some primary information and then a summary of. What we heard at those events. So. Take a look at that if you have questions about that. Um, I'm happy to to answer that those for you. Um, but the way we anticipate that folding into the to the comp plan is as an appendix. So we would leave our chapter three, I believe, about engagement as is. That has a much kind of higher level. Summary and like um engagement by the numbers and then this would be uh an appendix if anyone wanted to read further about. What what it is that we did over those eighteen months to two years. Um, please note that it also only goes until about May twentieth. Um, so we have continued to hear from residents through primarily email and public comment. Um, we have since then attended a few. Meetings that maybe council members called for their constituents and asked us to attend, so they very much felt like neighborhood. Meetings that were centering around the comp plan. So we sort of picked a stopping point when we finished like our last. Formal engagement when we did that round at the branch libraries. Um, and when we reviewed the first draft together. So. This summary does not include kind of our journey into the second draft. Which we can discuss if we want to add that, but that that is the current stopping point.
Commissioner.
Any questions about that?
Could I just suggest, I don't need know that you need to add detail on any of those things, but it would be nice. To have an overview of summary that that puts on the record what you just said. That you, this summary goes from here to here and then after the, here are the kinds of things we did as well. Building on top of it, just so that's thoroughly documented as well. Would be helpful, I think. And I don't know if that's is maybe a cover to this appendix or that probably would be where a good place to put it.
Okay. Yeah, the first page, there's kind of an intro explaining that. So I think we could add the timeline there that, you know, it currently stops at May twentieth. After our last formal engagement series, but that since then, I could lay out a little bit more about what's happened over this summer.
Yeah, give some bullet points or something just to make it clear. You didn't stop at that point. We we just started engaging more formally as the planning commission and such.
Okay.
Would be helpful.
Okay.
Mr. Leonard.
Yeah, a- and I just want to emphasize since that since that cutoff date, we have been very diligent. About when we're getting communications, those are of course appearing in your packet. So I just want to be clear to the commission. There there isn't like a. Uh, a backlog of communications that we haven't shared. They just haven't been incorporated. You continue to see those, of course, though.
Commissioner Norden.
And you've been, I know you did a kind of a summary of the themes that you were hearing of that from the. The substance of the comments that were coming in. Are are you continuing to update that? Overall summary too with the additional. Comments that have been coming in. I I would like to see all of that. I think that what you did was fine. But I want to make sure that's in the record too, in the plan, in the appendix somewhere and that it kind of is complete.
Yes, so again, that. There is a summary of that, but that ends, I think, in May. So in this summary, uh, on one of the pages, I can't tell you which one. We do have, um, if you remember a few months ago, I brought you summaries of like the public comment that we've been hearing. So we aggregated all those. There's been about five hundred and I pulled out the major themes. That's included in this summary. Um, but that ends again like at the end of May, so we would have to. Um, then go through all of the emails since then and go through that same process and pull out those themes and then we could add them back in to here.
Yeah, I I think given um and I would pull that out and make it more. Apparently, I didn't see it. I was just going quickly through the appendix materials. So I think that needs to stand out as it's on separate. Um, here's our summary of all of the written and email comments that we've gotten and here are the themes that we distilled out of them. And make it really clear, maybe that's a separate appendix all by itself or appendix to be. Or something like that. I want to make it um. You all have done a lot and we've heard lots and lots of comments. Um, and I know you've done a lot to summarize them. I want to make it really easy and transparent for folks looking at the plan to quickly get a bead on. Just how much feedback we've gotten and and make it easy for them to see see that. So I wanna. I'm not trying to make more work for you. I want I want to make it, I want to make it really clear to the whole world how much. Feedback we've been getting and and make that as transparent as possible.
Could it be possible that we could maybe on that intro page, we like. Could say what the top five to ten themes are we've heard throughout this eighteen months or you want specifically the public comments or the emails that we've received?
I think it would be nice to document how many public comments we've received. And then here through our efforts to make sense of them here, there definitely themes that have kind of. Bobled out of that and here are the key themes that we heard. Um, and I don't know that, I don't think you need to do a count of those because it's not a scientific, that would give a degree of um. Scientific gloss to us that's not there, but I think you, I think. There were some credible themes that kept popping up over and over again and I think it's helpful just to articulate, here's the things we heard repeatedly. And if you, maybe all of that stuff is in the summary to that appendix at the top, so it's really easy for people to see in a couple pages. Here's all the stuff we did and all the feedback we've heard and and distilled on the first two page or two is what, you know, the core of what we heard. Is that making sense? I'm looking at your face trying to decide if I'm making sense.
Right, I think so. I'm curious though what um Brett thinks. Or if he has a suggestion.
Yeah, I if if I could, I I. I I I'm reluctant to sort of separate out the email correspondence. Um, we have, that is another way that we have. We have found forums for community feedback, right? And just like we have held workshops and I don't. I guess off the cuff, I don't know that I like the notion of sort of elevating that to like a separate like. You know, we we held workshops, we had meeting in a box, we went to neighborhoods, we met with stakeholders. Chapter three, you know, chapter three says, chapter three does a lot of what you're talking about. That is the the roll up of a lot of the themes from all of that. So I I think that we can expand on that a little bit on the summary page, but I would um. I think what I would like to do is try and answer, address that through some some sort of by the numbers maybe added to that. In addition to chapter three of that appendix, rather than s- rather than sort of pulling out the emails that you've been getting. Through your packets as somehow. I don't know. Or forms, but I think we, I think we can get to what you're what you're getting to. I just wanted to chime in and say like, I I think I like it better incorporated into the appendix. And I I do want to recognize that that is the intent of sort of chapter three is to be that summary of what we've heard. But I think there's probably a middle ground, like you said, people who are looking for more information in that appendix. We can provide a little bit more of a highlight right there at the beginning about what they're gonna see.
Adding the appendix is going a a long way. I mean, there were statements being made before and there wasn't anything to back it up. The appendix is providing the backup. So now I want to just make sure that it's summarized clearly enough and maybe that is actually in the plan itself. But making those links and providing that documentation is what I'm trying to get to. So I don't, I'm not like hard set on, you gotta pull out the emails. I'm just trying to. Offer suggestions to try and make that as clear and full soon as possible. So thank, thank you.
I think what I'm hearing then is like in chapter three, we could refer to the appendix, right? Like here's the summary of what we've heard, but if you want more detail, you can do that. And then in the appendix, we can make a better effort in the intro to include some of the major themes. Um, from there, okay.
That would, that would work for me. I mean, if that works, if that works for you. That's fine with me. Thank you.
Commissioner Weatherby.
Yeah, I was just uh gonna comment, which I think is probably covered now on just numbering or. Having account of the email to the Planning Commission and the public comments, just because I think. That adds to the, hey, we've gotten lots of information in lots of different ways. Over a long period of time and and I.
Well, let's just be clear though, because the number is in there. So like we did, right? We got five hundred emails. Uh, during this time period. So.
Through the end of May, correct?
Yes. Yes.
But you stopped counting in May. And so we've probably received another two, three hundred communications plus another hundred and forty in-person communications. So I think the question, well, sorry, I, it is not my turn to speak, Commissioner.
I mean, to be honest, I only had about three minutes to look at this, but and I was looking, trying to find it, but um, so that's great if it's in there. Uh, but yeah, I would like to go as, as sort of recent as possible. Um, just because there's always going to be a more recent one, but if we can get as, as up to date as possible, that would be great.
I think it would be fair to update this up until the sixty-three day review period starts. And then that's sort of a separate collection process that we will start up. So, um, I can make
Because that's actually the official start of the notification process, correct?
Yeah.
Technically.
Correct.
So I was, um, just going to chime in here on this comment piece to ask you to just note what is required by state mandate. And then just con, if you could just summarize, like the state requires just the sixty three, sixty-three day review. And then, uh, but here's what we've done to engage the community so that there's a contrast uh, between those two, because I think, uh, a lot of people have a misunderstanding of what is required and don't recognize that this process, we've done more than what is required. They may not appreciate it, but I, I do think it's worth noting.
In the appendix.
If, if, uh, wherever you think it makes the best sense. I mean, I could see a very quick paragraph somewhere outside of the appendix that talks about, uh, public engagement, where you, where we already note the planning process and what's required by state law. And then we say, as we were engaging this process, here's how we exceeded that. Or here's how we approached it. I maybe don't say exceed. Here's how we approached it. And, and then summarize, I'm not looking for details. I'm just looking for a summary of, um, here's how, how much engagement we've been doing, because I think all of this is engagement. But some folks have a very narrow definition of what engagement, uh, looks like. And I would appreciate a more expansive view.
Okay.
Anything else on the engagement, Commissioner Wetherby?
I just also would like to know kind of for people that all of this is engagement and not just that they should engage and that, uh, they should come to planning commission and they should write email and stuff, because that is actually in our world, how engagement happens. And if they want to be heard, that's a really important piece of how people are heard. So it's not only kind of I really want to emphasize to people that that is how you are heard. And I think sometimes people feel like it's, oh, well, those are just people in the know or, but that it's actually, this is you, you have to take advantage of one of these many, many ways of engaging if you want to be heard. And that we're not just coming to your house.
Great. Thank you. Uh, do you want to do the map next or the narrative?
Um, well, they go hand in hand. Why don't I, I start with the narrative? Um, and I will share my screen for this.
If I could just interject at, so, um, at the last planning commission meeting, when we were talking about some of the outstanding maps, one of the uh, one of the items that came out was I had offered to try and sort of put something down as potentially a tiered or, uh, an aspect to the residential district to give the commission something to, not, not that I'm proposing that this is necessarily the answer, but just to give a potential approach to some of the areas that the commission was sort of struggling with. And so, um, I think Michelle's done a great job trying to approach that at a high level. And I just wanted to reorient the commission that that, that is the intention of this is to get this in front of you, give you some time to think about it before we dive into the actual discussion of that at the next meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Leonard.
So again, we're, uh, just introducing this to you this evening. So you have some time to review it, uh, for the nineteenth. But, um, what I've tried to do here is update the current residential as we, as it is written in our second draft with the edits that were a, approved, voted on by the commission on July twenty first. And then even with that, um, I did some further editing of the rationale and intent, just to make sure that it, it more tightly aligns with the other changes that were approved. So, um, this first part here shouldn't garner too much discussion, but
Michelle, I'm sorry, yes, to interrupt you. Can I just get a process, um, part? Are you going to do the whole document? Or are you going to go section by section to clarify if there are things we want to do? I just want to know how to manage comments so that they don't
Oh, sure. I was planning to just give a broad overview of the entire document. And then if questions wanted, if anyone had more specific questions, I'd be happy to do that.
Okay, please proceed and excuse my interruption.
That's okay. So, um, then as we've been discussing at the last couple of planning commission meetings, there has been sort of a hole in our current framework of, you know, what to do with R three and R four. Um, and so Brett had offered us, uh, staff to create a map. So I, I will show you the map, but I will also share with you that there is some narrative along with that. So you know what you're looking at at the map, just not how it's spatially arranged, but what that actually entails. And so then you can read here, I, I copied the same format that we have for our current residential, which is what is the intent? What is the rationale, the primary uses and building types and forms and considerate, form and set considerations? Um, so this, I imagine is where we'll spend a lot of our time discussing this, trying to get this right. And then the future land use map, um, updated, which I'll share in a second. Um, I did want to show you this table and then discuss my process here. So these are the seventeen sites that we've been going over. I put in a table what their current zoning is. There may be several zones, um, in in the area that we're looking at. And then what, uh, the planning commission has resolved them to be, or ones that remain unresolved. And then I put also staff's proposed land use. So um, the way I decided to do this is I wanted this table here to show what's on record because you guys did vote for these. And so we have that record and we can always go back to them. But my assumption was that because there's a new category and new information that you would like to see the map with that in mind. So even in areas where you had resolved it to be something and I, as staff, felt like this new residential might be a good fit. I went in that direction. Understanding that we may reinstate what you all had voted on before, if that makes sense. So here's the narrative that I'd like you to read through. And then if you all can see this, hopefully, here is the, the map. And I did not come up with a fun, creative name. I just wrote new residential and we can come up with something as a group, but
Are you showing us the map? Because I can only see your
I should be.
Uh, narrative screen.
Okay, let me reshare.
Again, I apologize for interrupting you.
No. If you can't see what I'm talking about, can you all see now?
Yes.
Okay. So here is the map that should match with the language that I've provided. Um, like I was saying, it's not a cool name. We'll, we'll have to figure something else out, but just so you could see along this gradient here, um, that it is slightly darker than residential. And it is covering the sites that we have discussed, the seventeen sites. So you can see this now spatially and you can see it now in written word. For, for us all to discuss next meeting.
Commissioner Wetherby, were you finished, Michelle?
Yeah.
Okay.
So just again, maybe this is just my eyes, but, um, it's kind of hard for me to see the paler, the new residential district distinction. I think I get it. But also when we talk about the seventeen sites, is there any way to get a map that has, I only have so much real estate and having a map that has the seventeen sites on it in addition, like
You want me to number these maybe? Would that be helpful?
That would be helpful if we're going to specifically talk about the seventeen sites. That means I've got to get my printed map and my this map and this map and this map. And I just want to make sure that we're all talking about the same things.
Yes, that, that's an easy fix. I can do that.
Thank you.
Commissioner Norden.
And I have a couple of thoughts. I know that we had some discussion right at the very end of the last planning commission meeting about the, about potential problems with introducing a new kind of residential and would that be inconsistent with the city council's direction to us in terms of how they wanted us to think about residential and height caps and such. And my, it's pretty clear to me that the, the residential that the city council was thinking about and talking about in their resolution and, and guidance to us was just the R one and R two residential. And so I think what you're doing here is maintaining the integrity of that. So I'm not troubled by creating a new residential category, however it's labeled. But I, I do want to make sure that the integrity of the process we've been following is kind of still there. So as I understand it, originally we were kind of taking the R one and R two existing zoning districts and putting them into the new residential category. And R three and R four were going into the transition. But the other things that made things appropriate for transition were things like proximity to other higher density areas and transition corridors and such. And the kind of seventeen troublesome spots we pulled out were places where that it didn't quite work, that that the, the, the kind of standard algorithm wasn't quite working correctly. And now let's go back and see if it's more fair or more appropriate to rethink those categories. So I want to, in your narrative, I think it, um, summarizing that process and what, where those seventeen sites are popping up, why they're, why we were considering them among all of the places in the map um, that we might have considered. I think that would be helpful to include that. And then my final thought was if you go back to the narrative, um, I don't know if you can pull that back up again.
Oh. Um, can I?
Because I'm still seeing yours. I'm still seeing the map.
Yeah, because I think I'm just sharing a window at a time. Okay. Let's, let's.
Yeah. So scroll, so here. This is just labels. Um, we should really consistently and carefully distinguish between when we're talking about a future land use map category and when we're talking about an existing zoning district. So that the headings should say proposed residential category. And then parenthetically, existing zoning districts, R one and R two. See what I'm doing?
So you're down here. You think that this should say residential land use category?
Yep.
And you should say R one and R two zones.
Existing, yeah, existing R one and R two districts.
Okay.
And then, and then make sure, so you've laid out the narrative of what these two different flavors of residential are all about, but I, I still want to make sure we're explaining. And I think this is getting folded into the plan itself, the algorithm that the staff worked up to kind of lead us into that transition from what's currently there to what, where the plan is headed. Because it's a combination of all of that that's still important. Is that, am I making sense?
Um, yes. So that, that was written, um, in a previous memo of that whole dilemma, right? Of, of what do we do? So I didn't carry a lot, like all of those details over. I just carried over, like this is additional draft language to reconcile how R three and R four zones are treated in the future land use map. But we can provide more detail there. And then this table hopefully will show that a lot of the R threes and R fours, I did propose as new residential. So like this table should help us figure out what that, that pattern is.
Yep.
But I can give you the
Yeah, the point I'm trying to make though is these seventeen sites don't come anywhere close to capturing, these are, we were commenting last time, it's a small number of sites that are troublesome. When the great bulk of the city, it worked to do the algorithm that we worked with. So I think it, it's helpful to explain again in this document how we ended up with the small number of sites that we're now spending so much time on and giving so much attention to. And it's because the logic of the first algorithm we used, while it worked in most places, didn't work well for these sites for particular reasons. And so that's why we're spending our time trying to figure out what's the right thing to do for those sites. And so I don't, I don't want that explanation to get lost. Maybe it doesn't need it to be in as much detail as what the prior memo did in terms of laying out the logic of it, but at least to mention it again, how did we end up with these seventeen sites that we're spending so much time on?
Okay.
Thank you, Commissioner Norden. Manager Leonard.
Yeah, I just wanted to appreciate your last, the sort of final portion of your comment there, Commissioner Norden. I want to be clear that you, you're using the term algorithm and this future land use map is a departure from our current zoning in a lot of, a lot of areas. So I want to be, I want to be clear. I agree with you. And that was, um, I think Michelle's done a really nice job here of trying to um, balance some of the concerns about these areas that don't fit easily into how we started with the map. Um, but at the same time, I want to be clear. We, this future land use map has R one areas that are part of transition zones now. So because of their proximity to a quarter. So I just, I just want to, I want to be, I, I just want to emphasize that. And we can summarize that. I, I'm not saying, I think that we can do a lot more, so, some additional explaining of that, but I just, I just want to be clear. A lot of that was how we started, but part of this is adopting a plan that is going to recommend some different approaches. These are sites that staff has sensed some processing by the commission on what's the right decision there. Um, so I, I, I just want to, I just want to be clear that that narrative is not so absolute that all X districts are going into this category. But it doesn't mean that it wasn't formative to how we started formal, forming the map that you see there.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. I totally get that. And I just want to make sure that that's not lost because we're being too every document from my perspective is a document that people will look at and maybe won't bother to go look at the rest of it. And so the document needs to stand on its own. Each document needs to stand on its own. And so I guess the algorithm is the right word to use, but there was a process that you all worked through and I totally get it. It's different. There was a logic to it. But this number of sites popped up as being problematic for some reason, the algorithm, the way we laid it out, it didn't quite work. These are the sites that are taking more attention just to make sure that, that they're appropriately designated. I want to make sure that logic gets explained in this memo. So if someone's reading just this memo, they know why, what it's doing.
Thank you, Commissioner Norden. Commissioner Adams.
Yeah, thanks. Um, this is really outstanding work on a pretty tight, awful turnaround. So thank, thank you, Michelle and Brett for putting this together. Um, yeah, I, I wanted to flag something for discussion, uh, next week, because I, it's working session and it doesn't feel appropriate to get into it here. And then also flag something for staff in case it's, I'm misreading it. So the, the flag for staff is on page two. End of the first paragraph, the plan identifies three stories and three units as appropriate height. Think we need to, we need to reword that a little bit because it's maybe scale. It's not height because we're getting into units there. Um, and then the thing to flag for the, the rest of the, the other commissioners for discussion. Um, the language here on duplexes and triplexes permitted by right with reform to dimensional standards to accommodate them. That's a little different from what the city council resolution suggested for residential. Um, where we had duplexes and permissive duplexes and triplexes, and then larger building typologies were appropriate. That's what we talked about last week. Um, I'd like to try to stick with that, uh, concept here. Um, Because I think that's what we were directed to do, and I feel like that's the right choice. It it looks like this is a little bit different. That's treating the unit, the duplexes and triplexes now as sort of a hard cap in our one and our two residential. What I'm, what I'm calling regular, we'll call it resident, regular residential. I'd, I'd like to go back to the council angle. We'll have to talk about that next week. And then I think also, and maybe this is a second flag for staff. I think, wasn't it Councilmember Dish last week who wanted us to get away from the by right language? And that was at council, that was at the city attorney's direction. So that by right language may have to change to whatever we discussed last meeting. That's all I wanted to flag.
Thank you, Commissioner Norton.
Yeah. I don't know.
Yeah, of course.
Yes, I may have gotten this language wrong. I I wasn't at the last meeting, but I did have the notes from it. And so from my understanding, everything was approved with a few scratch outs and re-rings. And so I had copied this language from there. But I may have missed one of the notes or edits. So this bullet point one, I can make sure is clarified. So maybe it was duplex and triplex are permitted as primary uses instead of by right. Maybe that was the edit.
That might have been it, yeah. I think I had by right in my memo and and Councilmember Dish said that that was no good to the city attorney's office.
No, you're correct. I I watched the meeting and that was the request was to move the words by right from the record.
Okay.
Any, anyone else on where Commissioner Adams is before we move on to a different area? And I I'd like to make a comment, and that's why I'm asking here. Okay, so Michelle, from me, again, just echoing Dan's comment, thank you. And Mr. Leonard and and other staff members who contributed to turning this around as quickly as you did. I want to echo Commissioner Weatherby's comment that maybe if you just put some hash marks or some texture into the color, it'll show up a little bit better because it is kind of hard to see it. And then I I do want to just slightly correct the record. I think the conflict wasn't around the seventeen as noted by your table. So if you can bring up the seventeen, you'll see that the commission at the bottom of of the document you have here, you can see that the commission has resolved quite a few of the seventeen. It was the unresolved ones. So just in in terms of like where the tension point is, I think the tension point really is in the unresolved. Not the whole of the seventeen, because I feel like there was an opportunity for the commission to have conversation and come to agreement because there were votes that were actually taken. And I think to Commissioner Norton's comment, sorry, just give me one second so that I make sure I don't exceed my time. There we go. I have a timer running. The to Commissioner Norton's comment, it does seem like we're spending a a lot of time on just these seventeen conflict points. And and I do want to reduce that to the ones that are really unresolved because those were the ones with the vote that the commission took last week that were not easily moved into residential or into transition. And I think there were two votes that attempted to accomplish that. And then if you go back up to the document where you are talking about the residential category with the existing R one, R two. Yes, so right, you can go down a page, sorry. And then you can stop there. Thank you so much. So one of the red lines that is missing is the language that the commission adopted from the Adams memo, which was inherited from the council resolution, which was the neighborhood scale and topology. And then it like, there was a, there was specific language that the commission worked through. And it's not, it it is here, but it's not in the upper section where it should be. And I think that's what I want to flag is this memo creates a hard cap where the council resolutions, both of them do not. Council has been very clear, both at the table, through their representative, as well as in their public comments in the media that duplexes and triplexes are not a ceiling. They are, they should be the floor, like they should be the things that are permitted and are made available, but other topologies, which is the language from the council resolution should be permitted where they meet the neighborhood form and and scale. I don't have the language in front of me, but I can send it to you, but it's in the Adams memo. But this memo on page one and two creates a new cap where there was no cap in the resolutions that we received from council. So I just want to, I want to flag that. Because I feel like we may spend a lot of time there, but if we could just go back to the language that the commission approved via
Yeah, let me just, let me clarify. So this is page one oh eight. I just took the edits that were approved from planning commission for pages one oh so if it's either one oh eight or one eighteen, because
Sure.
So that language that's approved will be incorporated into the plan, but just maybe not on this spread. So I can go back and check that. But what I did was so this residential land use category with the intent, the rationale, this is all laid out on one oh eight or one eighteen. And so I took the approved language that you guys all voted on and adopted for those two pages and put them in here. So there is very likely other language that you adopted about residential that might go on some of these other pages. So I didn't, I definitely don't want to change any of the language that you all adopted.
Sure, I think I would have to see it. Yeah, I would have to see it side by side because I'm, I I can't pull it up as quickly. But if you're on page two, you're the last line of the paragraph that starts on page one and then continues at the top of page two. That says, based on this input, the plan identifies three stories and three units and is appropriate height for these areas. The three units does not exist in any approved language that was discussed.
Oh, no, I added this. I added. So these are my edits here.
Right. And so, so that's something that is new, that that doesn't come out of the council resolution that's there. So I just want to flag that. And then the other, I think you are, you caught it from Commissioner Adams, which is in the primary uses and building types, we just, I would just want to see the language that came from the memo that staff agreed on other topologies. I think that was the language that both the Adams memo and staff agreed comes back in. Because if this is going to go straight to the consultants, then this is what's going to show up in the third version of the plan, and then it'll have to be flagged again. So I just want to make sure that we're using that language that came through that memo.
Okay, I think I'm getting a little confused because this, this is the language that was adopted and approved for this section of the plan as far as I understand it. So.
Sure, I I'll, I can flag it and send it to you as an email, which, which is fine. I I apologize for trying to have you hold all this stuff in your mind as I'm working through it. Mr. Leonard.
I will not sit here and pretend to be in your minds or the city council minds when they adopted that resolution. But I will observe that I think, I will speculate that when the city council passed that resolution, this plan, and as it does today, it has a single residential category. And that single residential category, as you have, as the commission have been struggling with, is difficult to apply when it is limited in scale to some baseline when there are larger units. And so I would just urge the planning commission to think about, as we prepare for this discussion next week, when we are talking about the, the the aspect of a comprehensive plan that says we want to establish a floor that triplexes are, should be readily available throughout any residential district in the city. The city council resolution said more residential should be, may be appropriate according to context or language thereabouts that. Language would be necessary if we have a single residential district that is trying to accommodate, accommodate all uses. If we, if the planning commission decides to go in a direction that bifurcates residential in some way, it might very well be meeting the intention of the council resolution to actually set a different floor for different portions of the residential district that are not limited to triplex versus other areas. So I, so so I understand what the comments here that council didn't set a cap, but I would, I would just offer that the planning, the city council is adopting that resolution in the context of a single district. And one of the ways you are thinking about responding to that from if you choose to go on this approach is might very well be to bifurcate that, that statement, up to triplexes is is available here. And something bigger might be available here. So I don't I, again, there's a lot of ways to interpret that, but I when I'm, when I'm hearing those comments about council didn't do that. Yes, but I think that's losing some details about the timing and how that was communicated. And this is a different way to respond to it. Where you might determine that that language, that butt language is not as important in one portion of the residential area versus the new residential area. So again, I I just think that's something I would encourage the commissioners to think about as we prepare for that next week. We can absolutely make sure that this is clear. If your intention is the existing residential should be three triplexes by right, but there should be the potential for more units as well in those areas. That's absolutely a public policy decision that this plan can articulate. I think that one of the ways that this plan might try to communicate that is bifurcating that in a tiered approach such as this.
Yeah, and I, if if it's okay, Commissioner Mills, just to follow up with that. Yeah, I, I, I think I understand where you are coming from. I don't, I don't think I have missed that articulation. So thanks, thanks for that feedback, Mr. Leonard. And then Michelle, I went back and finally found and pulled up the memo. And the language is on the staff memo from you and Mr. Leonard. It's on page two under the Adams section, and it's page one eighteen. And the language here is with additional building types allowed where consistent with neighborhood form and scale. So that's, I think, what I'm asking, and I'll send that to you as an email, to be put into your memo to us for next week so that that language stays there. And if you want to strike it, if you could just put it there, but then strike through it so that that language is printed and we're seeing that we're striking through it. So that could get to Mr. Leonard's point of saying we're striking it here so that we can create this new tiered residential, and then it's going to live there. But it's not going to live in the other place, I think, is what I would be advocating for myself personally. But I'll put that all in an email and make that super clear. And I'm happy to follow up if you have questions. All right, Commissioner Mills.
Thanks. I want to say, again, having the maps that have more distinction next time will be great. Whether it's hatching, whether it's color, color awesome. I really like what Commissioner Weatherby suggested before about numbering them. And the que, the, I want to, I'll say what I, what I want to see on that map. But I think I heard potentially Commissioner White, you suggest something different. So currently, the map that we're seeing is staff's recommendation even for places that we had resolved. I am cool with that. I'm also hearing that maybe you think that we should only talk about the places that were unresolved. And so in either situation, like understanding what the base map is, but if we're going to number them anyway, I don't know if we have red numbers for the ones that were like on where staff's map and the resolved things are different and black numbers for where it was unresolved, but some way to distinguish that because, I mean, I can see sections two, three, four, seven, parts of number nine. Or maybe, no, actually not number nine. Anyway, there are just a couple of sections where I think we should hide, like there, either we gotta, I think we're gonna have to go one way or the other. And I would say certainly when I said resolve it, it was on the idea that here are two choices. I, maybe that is the right resolution. I at least want to just look at those maps now. And so if possible, if you're going to add numbers anyway, to have some way to distinguish, like those ones that we had resolved versus unresolved will be helpful. Does that make sense?
Yes, so what, why don't I just update this map to only have the unresolved ones, but I can still number them all so that we can refer to all the sites and we have the table as well to go back to if. Yeah, so that that was the assumption I made is that you would want to see a new map because you only had two categories. Now you have three, so here's how I would distribute them amongst these three. But if for time's sake, we feel confident the ones that we already applied categories to are good to go, then we can focus on the unresolved. But I guess I would like to make sure that's the way the commission would like to do this.
I personally am happy to look at all seventeen. I'll let other people chime in. And like, I just want to make sure I know the map that we're looking at, whether it is showing the staff proposed or the planning commission, like how, which one it's showing. And my understanding is this, the map that we have right now are kind of where you had said, now that we have this category, we'll do it that way. And that's, I I'm fine with that. But in case others have an opinion, I just thought that we should bring that up now so that we know what we're talking about next week.
All right, Commissioner Abrams.
Thank you. So I agree, or I I think I recognize or I'm observing that I I understand if there's some difference of opinion about how to deal with the things which were prior, which were resolved prior. Because we were resolving those with different information or different options in front of us. I also understand a desire not to go back and rehash everything we've already discussed. I'm wondering if one way to do that is something we've done in the past, which is that we, and I know we don't have a lot of time for this, so I understand maybe if people think this is not a good idea or not feasible, but in the past, what we did is we kind of submitted, we flagged things that we wanted to discuss, we sent those to Michelle. And if there are, if there are some of those seventeen sites that everybody is fine with as currently proposed, we don't need to discuss them. And the ones that people want to discuss, we could flag. Because I just, and then I think if we were going to do that, we need to agree on like, what is the, what is it that we're signing off on? Is it the new proposed map as provided to us today by staff? Or is it the previous thing that that we just, that we voted on and kind of resolved prior before this new residential category existed? But I, because I think there are some in there that I Yeah, just personally, there are some, just looking through the list quickly. And again, we haven't had a lot of time with it, but there are some that staff has moved into new residential that I could be on board with and let go. And there are some that maybe I would like to discuss. So probably I assume others feel that way, too. Does that make sense? I can't tell if I'm rambling and being clear or not.
No, you are, but I don't know that, did you propose?
My proposal is that we set an internal deadline for ourselves to send Michelle a list of the sites one through seventeen that we would like to discuss. And if some of those numbers don't show up on anybody's list, then we don't need to talk about them. And I think what we would need to be very clear about is we're agreeing that we are looking at the future land use oh nine draft three file, which was shared with us today and the seventeen sites and saying, do we want to discuss any of those?
So Michelle, can I ask you to put the table on? I'm, I'm sorry, just a moment, if you will, Commissioner Norton. So could you and Commissioner Adams, please help me if this is not in keeping with the direction that you just communicated. Could we just have a column on the N and that each of us get this table with a column that basically a commissioner could say, I'm okay with this, or I want to change this. And then we send that into you by Friday before three P M. Because the agenda has to be published by five P M. published by 5:00 PM. Um, and so staff let me know if we have wiggle room beyond 5:00 PM on Friday. And then we, we target, we can talk about all 17, but we target the ones where there is no agreement for a process of expediency. Um, is it, is that what you were communicating to us, Commissioner Adam Abrams? Sorry.
Yeah. So for instance, yeah, number two, we, we agreed it would be transitioned, staff is proposing new residential. If everybody's great with that, great, let's move on.
Can we just, can I, can I jump in? Can we decide that off of a working meeting or since we voted in it, on it in a regular meeting, do we have to?
No, 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 we're not deciding anything today. We're deciding on a process for talking about it at our next regular meeting. That's all, I'm proposing a, a process by which we get from today to a week from today.
Yeah, we're not making a decision, Commissioner Norton. We're.
Well, but if we drop them off the table and we're not going to talk about it, then we have decided.
We, we haven't dropped them off the table. No one has suggested that we drop them off the table.
I'm proposing a process by which we will decide next Tuesday that we don't need to talk about it.
Yep.
I can, yeah.
Can I ask a clarifying question?
To?
I guess to Commissioner Abrams and Chair. How many people on the commission would we like to have said they want to talk about this before we decide to talk, like if one of you says you want to discuss this site, should we bring it up or should it be 50% of the commission or the majority of the commission or if anyone exposed, like has any interest in it, then we?
No, 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 I, I think I was proposing majority because the assumption being that if only one or two want to revisit it, that it wouldn't get the vote. But again, this is just a proposal, so people can revise that.
So we will be talking about seven because they are unresolved. Right? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, sorry. Eight of the 17 will be discussed because they are currently unresolved. The other ones.
That's, so what I was proposing is if you are in agreement with the resolution that staff is proposing.
Ah, I see what you're saying.
If you, if the number 14, you agree that that should be new residential, don't flag.
Right? Yeah. So I, I can see where, Michelle, you need guidance because I'm just to forecast, I'm not, I do not like new residential. So as a new category, I, I want us to either change them all together to like District A, District B, District C, District D, so that we get rid of these labels and then have things fit into that, or we just go back to the original three. So I'll, I'll highlight that in my note, but I think we should see the whole table. And then based on what you get from us on feedback, I think you could prioritize those. Um, and then that would help us with our discussion because I think we will first have to decide if we want to accept staff's recommendation to tier residential. And then if we accept that recommendation, then we can move to how we place these at the regular meeting on the map. All right. Commissioner Norton?
That letter, what you just said was the point I was trying to get to. We need to decide first whether we are going to add in this new residential category. And then if we do, then we'll need to decide as a group where staff has suggested where we had decided transition, it should be new residential, we should make that formal during a regular meeting. So it looks to me like the only one that wouldn't change either way is item number 11, because we already agreed to put it into transition and that's what staff is recommending. That's the one that we could drop from the table. It's already been recited. It's been fixed and it's not going to change. The rest of these, I think there's some discussion about how, how we treat them. So I think, I think I see 16.
Great. I don't think I disagree with what you're saying, Commissioner Norton. Commissioner Leonard, uh, manager Leonard, we just changed your role. We'll have to get approval from council.
You're not smart enough for that. Uh, so.
You flatter us.
Uh, the, um, I'm putting on my not quite, I am not a legal counsel for the city. This, we can, we can, um, we can approach this, but I'm reluctant to set any sort of quota for people who do want to talk about that to be happening outside the public realm. I would just encourage us to get to the next meeting. And let's try to, Chair White, I'm sure that you can come up, have some ideas. I think I would, I would prefer that once we get there, if there, and we decide, you decide that you'd like to pursue this notion of another district, think about a way to dispatch those upon the table quickly that can be at the meeting versus any sort of, I, I'm a little uncomfortable of like receiving private emails from commissioners where somewhere between one and a majority have decided something and we are making a decision to do something or not to do something. So my preference would be that I, I'm sure we can find the way to, we've been able to do this with other things like, you know, it's sort of like akin to the council consent agenda. Does anybody want to pull any of these out for discussion? Are we good with all the rest? And then we can focus on those quickly. So I would.
But I wasn't thinking that this would be private. I was thinking you would show us the table and then you would show us where we voted, which is something we have done, um, prior, but maybe I'm misunderstanding what you're trying to communicate to us.
Yeah. Um, well, let me, let me, let me think about if there's a way to do that. I just don't want, I think as long as that is, as long as that's determined at the meeting, that's probably okay. I guess what I was hearing is if we get five commissioners to say, I don't care about number seven, that that doesn't show up on the table. I'm a little less comfortable with that.
No, I think, I think, I, I think I want to affirm the table is not going away. So for, for everybody who's hearing this discussion, the table of these 17 sites will stay. So that will persist into Michelle's next version of this memo. All I was interpreting from Commissioner Abrams was that, um, there would be a new column with some indicators of support for what staff is proposing so that at a glance we would be able to see, um, at the table, oh, there's agreement here. So we can, we don't have to spend as much time as we previously have on this. And that would still be in the public record. So it would basically be a collation of those communications, not you keeping them from the public record. And I appreciate your concern about ensuring that our deliberations meet the Open Meetings Act and that are available and accessible to the public at all time. All right. Commissioner Abrams, again, sorry.
Um, I was just going to say another version, if this makes you more comfortable, Mr. Leonard, is that we can just come prepared to, each of us can come prepared essentially, you know, to do a, a voice vote about whether we want to discuss something and we don't have to share that with you in advance if that feels more in line with how we should run it. I, I also just wanted to say, I think, um, yes, the first thing we need to discuss is whether or not the idea of a new residential, whatever we name it, and the deep, and whatever its details are, but the idea of tiering residential is something we are majority in support of. But I just wanted to say that if we were majority in support of that, then I, I guess I don't understand why they're no matter what, we're discussing 16 sites. It's like if the majority of us were in support of that, and as we went through the sites, the majority were, were in support of staff's proposed land use given that tier, it seems like there's some we wouldn't have to discuss. So maybe the process just has to play itself out, but, um, it feels like we could, yeah, if we spend some time doing our homework this week and looking at the materials that Michelle has provided us, we might be able to move through these relatively efficiently.
Thank you. Commissioner Mills?
I was going to say, the only thing that would facilitate doing that homework is to remind us in which packet the map with the numbers of the sites is, because I think that if we, if we don't have that before our discussion of like which ones we want to map, that, that's nine of us all doing that comparison, um, which is easy if, if I know which, I can't remember which meeting. So, um, just, yeah, there was a map.
We'll attach that.
An overall city map. And I know that it was site by site, but it's actually sometimes, I don't know.
Yeah. Michelle?
I feel like it was in Commissioner.
Let's have the map with numbers.
Yeah.
And we'll add that PowerPoint.
Well, um, wouldn't it, I thought what we discussed, it would just be easier if I numbered this map that is currently in your packet, so you don't have to go back and forth between them. So I can commit to doing that before Friday when the agenda goes out. But I guess in the meantime, if you want to work on it, um, you, you will have to go back and forth between the, the PowerPoint and this.
Does anyone have in their like short-term memory which meeting it's in? Okay. Go ahead.
So I, well, I have it in, I have my edited version of it from July 15th and it was called future land use or F L U map amendments. But I have my own copy where I made notes all over it. I, I don't have the original in my files, but I think it, it was either the 15th or it could have been the one before that. No, I think it is July 15th.
So it should be in Legisar, um, as an attachment to the agenda item for that is what you're suggesting.
I think the difference between that one, Michelle, and what you're, and the numbered map you're talking about is this is the one that has the zoom in, right, of the?
The PowerPoint.
Current zoning district zoomed in and the future land use map zoom. And that's very helpful to see. So you kind of need both. You need like the marked up big one and you need.
Okay.
The August.
Share that with us, that would be great.
The August 5th agenda has the detailed maps and they're organized by the unresolved and resolved areas.
Okay. Because I think it'll be difficult if we have to wait to Friday to see it and then use the weekend to get ready for Tuesday as people may have some week. And I, I appreciate what you were offering, Michelle, but I think if we could just use what is already in the record for our homework aspect, you can still work on it as you have indicated and we can expect to see it in the agenda on Friday before five, but, um, I don't know that everyone can wait that long to, to do the work. All right. Michelle, did you get the feedback that you wanted from the commission?
So yeah, let me, let me be clear. I'm not creating an, a separate column for that table. You all will come prepared, do your homework and we will try to be as efficient as possible. I just want to remind you all, this is not the last thing, like that we have to discuss still. There are still more edits and.
Right. So how do, we haven't seen an updated schedule and I read in a council member's newsletter that the comprehensive plan was no longer going to be submitted to council this year. It wasn't going to get to them until 2026. And I was surprised to read that because that was a communication that I hadn't received. And I was like, whoa, are we really that far off our schedule?
Um, so that doesn't seem quite right to me either. I guess we've put together probably half a dozen timelines and they've all changed. So I am reluctant to give a date by date one, but this is, this is how I see it going. Ideally, this next meeting, or at least the August meetings, we will wrap up the second draft and then we will send it to our consultants to have about a month to do the next round of edits. So we're looking at end of September. Then when it comes to you all. I guess there could be some discussion, but the idea is that the third draft, when it comes to you, you have to formally, as state statute requires, like forward it to, you know, recommend to council to open it for the 63 day review period. So I can see that if we stick to that, they would be receiving it for their approval of opening the 63 day review period in 2025. But that, that 63 day review period may go into 2026. And then the, the public hearings for the final adoption will most definitely be in 2026. So maybe that's what they were referring to as adoption, but they will see, I mean, they will see it to open the 63 day review period in 2025, if we can finish this in, in August.
Okay. And then can you all advise us on the council, um, agenda item that extended the consultants' engagement and also seemed to have indicated a new public, uh, feedback section? Did I understand that correctly or was that just mislabeled in the press?
That was in one of the original versions, but I thought that that had been removed.
It was just the, the council approved the contract amendment because our timeline is extending and I also wanted the potential to retain our consultants to help join some of these meetings. We are, we have mostly used up our budget for this work. And so I wanted the opportunity to make sure we could respond in a timely basis and potentially bring them to presentations as part of the plan. So that's, that's probably the reference that was included. But in short, city council approved a modification of approximately an additional $85,000 to the budget.
Okay. So i- if I could request, once the second draft is submitted to the consultants, can we get an updated, um, proposed schedule? Um, because then I feel like we are back on a track. It's not the original track to have it approved by November, but we are now back on a track. And so if we could just see what your time estimates look like, and it sounds like the third revision is a go no-go type of thing, that we shouldn't have two more months of revisions into that. And this is basically everything in here looks good to us and we're now ready to send it to council for their, um, opening of the 60 day, 63 day period. And that would come to our table by the end of September if the consultants took a month, if we got it to them by the end of August.
Correct.
Okay. Is that everyone else's understanding? Do other commissioners have questions?
I think it's probably October. I'm just thinking about logistics. If you, if you happen to wrap this up at your next meeting, um, and they get a month, that's going to be about to your second September meeting, which means we're not going to have it to put on the agenda. So I just want to be realistic. You're probably looking at an October meeting for that.
Okay. So maybe by the first.
Yeah.
Regular meeting in October, because you're only looking at our two regular meetings. Commissioner Mills?
I think that that is very copacetic with kind of how I imagined this. The only clarification I would have is, um, I understand that we are not, we're going to make sure that draft three, we're cool with putting our names on it for circulation, but also the whole purpose of having public comment for two months so that it's, I don't, I, we don't have to pass the version that goes out, right? Otherwise, like we should make sure we're communicating that to the public. Because if there's not, if we're not anticipating that the feedback that we get in those 63 days is going to affect at all, um, anything in there, then I think that that we should be very clear about that personally. I, again, I don't think that we're going to, I can't imagine that we're, like that we're breaking it all apart because we've broken it apart and now put it back together. But the idea that if there is, there, I can't imagine that this is going out without a typo or words that are out of place or like actually this, this image, you know, or this typology doesn't fit here. I'm, I'm, I just want to understand what we mean by, like, or what the expectations are in terms of what happened if like third draft is final, because I think that that, we should know that when we're going into our, that meeting where we talk about the third draft, about releasing it.
Michelle, please.
Um, yes, there will be edits coming in from the public and from anyone who reviews it. I think the idea is extending the budget to, um, pay for their time to do these kind of major overhauls and rethinking of things, but that when we get to the third draft, not that we're not taking feedback, we are taking feedback, but we're hoping that it is on the scale of, here's a typo where we write the sentence, not you need to rethink this entire future land use. So I guess it's in the middle of like, we requested more money because there have been major, you know, back and forths and changes. We still expect there to be some during the public review period, but that we're not doing a massive rethink of things. We're refining.
All right. Anyone else on anything related to the, um, additional documents that Michelle and Mr. Leonard added to our agenda? We haven't heard from, oh, all right. Before I go to you, Commissioner Norton, I was actually going to ask you, Commissioner Lee, I don't think we've heard from you tonight, so, uh, anything?
No, I think, I think the schedule makes sense to me, um, overall, um, but I also agree with Planner Bennett and. Um, but I also agree with Planner Bennett and saying that um, it to expect like wholesale changes is obviously not the case, but um, we, we will definitely be taking feedback. So yeah. Uh, October makes sense to me. Thanks.
Great. All right, Commissioner Norton.
Just to reiterate, I'm, I'm in, in line with Commissioner Mills that we've done a lot of vetting on this plan. We've gotten lots and lots of feedback. We've done lots of revisions. We have paused the plan to, to take, you know, the feedback we've gotten. I would expect that the public comment we get in the sixty-three period would largely mirror what we've already heard. But in good faith, we have to keep open the possibility that somebody will point out something that we haven't thought of and that deserves attention. And so in good faith, we need to make clear to folks, this is a meaningful public review period. Hopefully all that we're going to get are typos. And maybe some minor tweaks here and there. But it, it would be a mistake to approach it or think about it or telegraph to everybody that it's pro forma. Um, we're not going to do any more work on this because it's gone out in our third form. So I would want to not have that become the message that's, that's been used as it's sent, sent out.
Great. With that, oh, Commissioner Adams. No, I'm sorry, you just popped up. So that's why I said, oh.
I was just going to tack on. I suspect that's also, you know, illegal. Right? Like you can't satisfy sixty-two, you can't satisfy notice and comment period by telling the public it's not a, you know, you're not, it's done. So that, I don't, I haven't done the research, but we should do that.
Yeah. I think when we were talking about the third version being the final version, at least in my mind, it was the final version before we sent it to council. Not the final version before it was approved, but I could see that someone could think we met, we're done receiving feedback. And so you've had your chance. So this is good clarification for everyone who's listening and quoting us later. Michelle, you have your hand up.
Um, I just want to make sure I have all my marching orders correct. So I'm going to number the map and see what I can do about the color, provide contrast or hatch. Um, I'm going to add to the memo uh, as Commissioner Norton suggested that this is a standalone document. And so we should rewrite some of the logic um, as to why we're spending so much time on these seventeen sites and why they didn't fit into the original framework. I'm, we are not doing any votes or you're not sending me anything. In the meantime, you will come prepared. Um, and so I guess that, that means I'm leaving the map as is. I'm, because we're going to discuss them. I'm not changing the map to only show the unresolved ones, or sorry, yeah, the unresolved ones. I am, I am leaving the map and just numbering it.
I think that's correct.
Okay.
Mr. Leonard.
Ironically hit my button.
Okay, great.
Oh.
Well, thank you, Michelle. Thank you for the super fast turnaround uh, from the August fifth meeting to get this to us uh, today so that we could preview it. Uh, thank you for enduring our hour and twenty-five minute of uh, feedback on this work effort and we look forward uh, to our time together uh, at the table on the nineteenth. And with that, I will take us to our next agenda item, which is another opportunity for individuals to speak up to three minutes on any issue. Uh, if you are connected on Zoom, I think we have one participant. If you'd like to address the commission, you can press star nine if you're on the phone or the raised hand feature in Zoom. City staff will identify you uh, when you hear it's your announcement to speak, please do so. Uh, but ensure that you're in a quiet area, mute any background noise. Uh, if you are giving a comment, please state your name and address at the beginning of your comment. For the member of the public who is attending this meeting now, if you'd like to address uh, the commission, now is your opportunity. All right, seeing that no hands were raised, I think I can take us straight to adjournment. And so we are adjourned. Everyone have a great evening.
Good night.